Is it still sleeping?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, I gotta yes and no.
Is it sleeping enough?
It's just a heavy one.
Is it sleeping enough for the Public Works Department to worry about?
It's under control.
We've got the two Public Works guys that know about that kind of stuff. I'd like to thank everyone for coming to the city council meeting this evening. If you please join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invitation brought this evening by Councilman Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with him. Father, we come before you and we thank you for how you've cared for us and we acknowledge that you're watching over us and caring for each one of us individually and as a community, and we thank you. Father, I thank you for the privilege to be able to serve the citizens this way and we pray that you just continue to lead us and guide us as we make decisions regarding the city. Father, as this week comes with the holiday activities going on, we ask for safety. We ask for safety for our children, for the parents. Just watch over each one throughout the rest of these days this week, in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
We'll get started with items on, I'm sorry, citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. Don't see anyone that might want to speak to that unless you have a personal agenda. We'll keep on going. The next item is our consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes the minutes from the October 14th, 2019 city council meeting, complaints for city operation, complaints for public housing authority, PHA insurance contract, and third quarter 2019 financial reports. Anything to be pulled by the citizens? Staff? I would like to pull the minutes from the October 14th meeting. Anyone else? Seeing none? I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we accept the consent agenda with the minutes from the last being pulled.
All those in favor? Oh, sorry about that.
Shannon?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Thompson? Wood?
Ask? Yes.
Gerly?
Yes?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. My concern was with the minutes as they're included in the consent agenda. I, there were some concerns at the meeting last, last time, and I want to make sure that we go over theirs. One of those concerns was pretty specific and that it was not a part of the minutes, and I think it should be duly noted that Councilman Mackey made mention that he filed a COMO violation against Mr. Stevens and myself, the mayor, for a secret meeting about a commission that he was told had been disbanded. And that was left out of the minutes. I think it would be best that, since that's referenced later, that he apologized or made mention that through his investigation that wasn't the case and it wasn't referenced before, so I think it should be a part of the minutes.
Do we need a, do I need to make a motion to amend those, the minutes? I'll make that motion. All those in favor of that amendment?
No.
We can call the...
Yeah, all, yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
You want to call a vote?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gerly? Yes.
Very good. On to our regular meeting agenda.
Is that just the amendment to the motion, or to the minutes? Do we still need to pass the minutes, or did you take that as a motion to?
I assume that was a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make sure.
Regular meeting agenda, item number one, streets resurfacing project.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Matt Meeks, Deputy Director of Public Works. Tonight bringing to you the, a recommendation to approve Superior Bowen asphalt to do this year's middle street work resurfacing project. This project was delayed a little bit until we got the water line portion done in the CDS project. So that's all been wrapped up, now we're doing final calculations on it. This project will resurface basically those streets. It'll be Cornell from Morris to Spring. Clark to Morris to Pine, Shidley, Morris to Pine, Emerson, Morris to Pine. Then it's going to do Warner between Shidley and the Dead End and, I'm sorry, Murphy between Shidley and the Dead End. Warner from Holmstagg, from like three or four hundred block down to the Dead End. And then it also includes Millinole Lake Kansas Avenue east from Melton to K-7, the other side of K-7, all the way out to 138th Street. And then the last piece on this is the reclamation court, that project at bottom of Metropolitan between 138th and City Wards. This project came in a little over what we had intended and had budgeted. Part of that was due to we didn't include any pavement markings in our original estimate on it. Second part is, is the reclamation portion is a little bit different than what we've ever done in the past. We consulted with some contractors and have a kind of a new spec that we're going to try out out here on Metropolitan, like what we've done in the past. It basically includes adding some concrete material to the sub base to stabilize it a little bit, is what we're seeing. So, like I said, it was an estimate what we were using for our dollar figure for square yardage. It came in a little bit higher than what we were expecting. So that's between that and then the pavement markings that we didn't have, that's why it's a little above our estimate, what we were planning on the project. Spoke with the Superior Bowen contractor. They are, they think they can get, actually get this done before this, still get it done this year. Only I'm concerned, personally I'm concerned about is the pavement markings on it, because that easily is temperature, requires a certain temperature. So if we can't get the pavement markings in, it'll be a temporary pavement marking, so we'll have to go and get this through to winter, then have them come back into the spring and finish up the project. Any questions?
Would the, if they could get the pavement markings in, you'd see the temp, we'd have something tipper and then they would come back. Would that be an additional cost, or?
Most likely, yes, it would be a whole lot, but it would most likely be just, the only streets are Kansas Avenue on both sides of K-7 and, oh, the other one was Morris. Sorry, I had to pre-lead that one, Morris and Nelson, all the way down to K-32.
Oh, go ahead.
The Morris from Melton all the way down to K-32, is there going to be an extension to the big dip?
I don't like that. That's my question, right?
I'm sorry.
Yes, I would.
Come with the Clark, can you?
Yeah. I wasn't talking about my brother. Shots fired. The side of the road or the, on 130, I'm sorry, on Metropolitan west of 138th, is that being revised, or I saw something mentioned about that?
We probably about a month and a half ago had a contractor come in and actually reestablish the ditches down the side of the road. That was part of our problem with it in the past. When we overlaid it back in 2012 and it pretty much exploded within six months, there was water that was still getting to meet the road. And that's, we're trying, we tried to take care of that beforehand. So we've come back in and reestablished the ditches down the side, and then we'll probably be a little, a little rocky up there still.
And then, so thank you.
Well, it was Metropolitan chosen for the reclamation department.
Because it actually got, after the winter last year, it really jumped up on our list from where it was at before. Just the condition of it was really broken.
So is this a trial to see if this type of surfacing has a longer life that we'll use in other places, or is this best suited to that particular road?
No, it could be used in other non-courting areas of the outer, especially where I have some pretty problems like this.
My question was simply, this is not all going to be done, so the whole of downtown Bonner is shut off at once, right? What will happen with parking?
No, Millinole Lake process actually, that happens pretty quickly. They come in with a big machine that drives, runs down the road and grinds off like the top two inches of the street. And while it's grinding it off, it's dumping it into the dump truck right ahead of the, of the equipment, and they're hauling it out. And then there's another crew right behind them, usually it's laying the asphalt circus back in. So maybe like a day, they'll come in, they'll knock it out, and then they'll come in a day or two later and actually lay the asphalt down. This contractor actually is a larger contractor. He's never been on any of the projects in the past. One of the things that we're going to see, yeah, it's a larger project, but they also have a lot larger crew. So potentially you have multiple crews coming in that do this and get them in a few weeks compared to like a month or two.
So the parking is not going to be a problem?
Residents on those streets effectively will have to park on either in the driveways or a side street during that day. But we will communicate that and coordinate it with them.
That's all taken forward, that's true.
Pine area being done, is that Cooper's area? This is before my, Pine Street, Pine Joe, I guess that Cooper's area. Can we save a little bit of that when they get it?
We're only going up to Pine at this point, we're not doing Pine yet. Well, Pine, there is a water line that's still in there, and then there's Spring is the other crossroad street that's just to the north. It's not on this list yet because of, there's quite a bit of concrete work. Once we get those two areas knocked out, this whole area.
How many miles of service is that, do you know?
I don't know, I have, sorry.
That's right.
Okay, my question was about the dip one, Morris Street. And on Metropolitan out there, what we're doing, is this something that's going to last for a while? I mean, I was worried about the road bed and re, because that thing fell apart so bad.
Prior, what we did, when we ground it up, tilted it up, about six inches, and we added rock to it. And then we stabilized it running, you know, sheets, this equipment across it to compact it down to like a 95% compaction rate. This one is a little bit different. It'll grind it up again, but adding the cement material to the base and water to it will actually set it up to be like a, almost like a concrete base on it.
So this is like fly ash or?
It's cement treated base, is what it is.
So they're going to stabilize the sub base that we're under, under the amendment. Can you talk about this really quick with that question in mind, what you guys did on Metropolitan in preparation to do this as far as the ditch work? What that has to do with that?
Yeah, that's why we did the ditch work when we had contract come in a few weeks ago. With this in mind, this needed to be done to keep us from failing like we did back in 2012.
The, I had a quarrel about this in the past years, and I think staff had said that it was possible, and I thought it was going to be done at one point in time. That was commercial drive where it accesses Kansas Avenue, the possibility to put in a right-hand dedicated turn lane, a left straight lane, and then a northbound lane. And I know at one point in time, I think it was going to be done as part of the last time we painted, but it didn't get, it didn't get accomplished, I think because we ran out of time.
Ran out of time, yeah.
I didn't know if that was going to be, since we're doing Kansas Avenue, that's on the possibility.
Yeah, it very possible could be added to it when we come back in.
Because I know a lot, there's a lot of the merchants in that, in the Northridge who complain about people who want to use their parking lot as a right-hand turn lane because everything stacks up. And if we have a dedicated right turn lane, it would hopefully alleviate problem with people using that, that parking lot as a, as right-hand turn lane.
One other thing, you're right, we don't have a motion on the table to discuss, but ask questions, I guess, of staff. The other question I have, we recently got where that, or there was a complaint concerning River View. That has been picked care of, or is that?
Yeah, the status on the east part of River View, River View is between 118th and 110th Street. Out, we did the storm box replacement a couple of years ago. We had a corrugated little pipe, no, I'm sorry, this was actually an old stone box, hand-cut stone box, really probably close to 100 years old, underneath the road finally failed. And we, we had to go out and do basically a roof repair out there and dig this old box out, replace it with an HCP plastic pipe. Our crews have already finished that work, and we do know of another box, or another pipe, I'm sorry, just to east of this one, that's going to be visited by a place as well in the future. But we want to take care of these storm issues underneath these roads before we overlay it. But this could be potentially another road that we would look at during the same process, this reclamation process on.
So over that repair, did you patch it, or is it just gravel, or?
No, we patched it.
Patched it?
We patched it back with asphalt.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I entertain a motion. Make a motion to award a bid to Superior Bowen Asphalt Company LLC, any amount of $912,807.90 for the 2019 street resurfacing project. Sorry. Do we have seconds, other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gerly?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to item number three.
P2, okay. Somebody's missed number five.
I was so confused.
Look on that. It says three here.
Yeah, because he went down there.
Let's call it item number two.
On the electronic agenda, it's item number two.
It is, yeah.
Watershed organization six agreement. Yeah.
Good evening, Frank D. Bar, Public Works Director. I've got before you today an agreement with Johnson County. They've, they've done something kind of interesting to manage and organize their stormwater activities. They have six different watersheds within Johnson County. They've, of course, divided them up by watersheds. And everybody, every entity that actually touches or is involved, which we are with the watershed number six, they're looking for all public entities to at least join this agreement to say that we'll talk, we'll cooperate, and we'll work together kind of thing. And I doubt that a whole lot of it will impact water springs, but we do have some, I'm going to say, pretty minor stormwater stuff at this point that we have to deal with just across the river in Johnson County. We're going to be a pretty small piece of this, and as I said, at this point, they're not even asking for any money, but in fact, they're going to organize this in a way to divvy up whatever money that they're going to be providing, I guess, funding to stormwater activities throughout Johnson County. So essentially, this is a request to have us go ahead and join and sign in this effort with Johnson County.
Very good.
I'm not even asking for any money.
Very good. Any other staff seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve a watershed organization six agreement with participating Johnson County public entities to coordinate stormwater planning and improvements.
Very good. We'll start right here with questions.
Well, I gathered that there was no financial impact, and you said something about we're divvying up the...
Johnson County, they have, they have stormwater funding that they'll be, they'll be using this organizational format to assign a value and assist financially wherever they think appropriate. So I think it's really good the way they all laid out.
Okay.
Probably a really good chance to capitalize on some of their resources and might learn.
Possibility of that, yeah.
Did you remind them that we are also in Johnson County?
Oh, yeah.
That's probably why.
I've got nothing additional.
The area is near the industrial park, and the entire industrial park has dealt with stormwater before. We have curbs and gutters on that there, I believe, mode. Is there underground stormwater?
There is a, Frank can probably speak to it. There's stormwater detention and retention areas there. However, I don't think those are ours. I think those are in Chiny.
Yeah, the outfall.
Right, the outfall through the levee, which we do need to repair, actually.
Yeah, you're asking for money.
It's going to, well, not yet. That's getting delayed into 2020 because it took so long for the river to go down. So can't, can't fix the hole in the levee when the, when the river's way out.
Well, I appreciate it, but it's not, it's not as bad as what it could be.
Absolutely.
Very good. No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gerly?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Very good. On to item number three, which is the InCode community development software.
Hello, Senator Colas, we're just getting in here. The item I have before you ties in with the next one. Kind of, it's all the same package, they all tie together. This piece is for community development. So the city clerk would be able to use this piece for the business licensing, occupational licensing piece. Our codes and planning staff, the nuisance codes and building codes would all be able to use these, the community development software. Right now, we're using a series of access databases and Excel spreadsheets. They get us by. They're not the best option. They freeze a lot. They, if you make one mistake in an access database, your data is gone, you can't retrieve it. Luckily, we do backups, which we've had to rely on here and there. But these databases were built by a one-person contractor, and that's who we still work with when we have problems with the database, which is often. It often freezes, if you open it wrong, it causes the database to just not work. We have to call this contractor pretty regularly to get them to fix our database issues that we've got going on. So the InCode community development software would tie in with the finance piece. Right now, when we have permits that we're issuing or we have planning items, it's entered into our databases in our department, and then it gets forwarded to finance where it's entered in in the receiving software. So this would eliminate that piece as well instead of duplicate entries or sometimes even triple entries by the time it gets over to accounts. A general ledger piece, they would all tie in together. This would allow residents, if we wanted to open up this capability, they could submit their requests online. If we ever got to an online type payment, they could pay for their building permits and licenses online. That's still kind of up in the air, but it does have the capability to do that should we want to in the future. Our current software doesn't give us that capability. It would allow us to access this module from any device. Right now, in the software we're using, it has to be installed on your computer for your user. We have to call the contractor every time we want it installed on a different computer or device. It can't be used on mobile devices and tablets. This software could be, it's seamless from a phone to a tablet to a laptop to your computer, it's all cloud-based. So the permits that are done, or the inspections that are done out in the field, they could add notes, they could do dictation, and it would all go into the same file. We'd have electronic files for all of it, and it would all, it would all be seamless. It is. We could have real-time information, so when somebody goes out and does an inspection, more nuisance codes-wise, since we have on staff, staff here that goes out and does the nuisance codes, he could do an inspection, we could see real-time what's going on with whichever property he's working on. It would streamline that workflow between the office and the field, and just the staff here could easily pull it up and he could be working on it. It, it kind of syncs everything and schedules inspections for us. So instead of adding reminders throughout several different programs, it just kind of automatically walks, walks the person through the process. So we know what's next with this building permit it's got an inspection due. We can easily see what's going on instead of having to pull out files and track back through. You just have time to kind of do some research, it's just an easy click to see what the staff has did. So this is a one-time fee of $30,291. It is the license and implementation cost for the program. The implementation schedule for the entire package, including finance, I believe, is nine to 12 months. So it would just be a piece of that package. And then the annual maintenance fees for the community development piece would be $6,830 on a recurring basis that we, we would need funded.
And that's just on the community development, not the financial?
This is just for community development. The $30,000 implementation and license, and then the $6,000 is for community development.
That's the $6,000 total, because there are several recurring on each, that's how. And the, have their own recurring?
Yeah, yeah, the finance has its own recurring.
No, I mean inside the community, I thought the licenses have recurring and then the permanent, or that's total?
It's total, yeah, the $6,000 is total of that.
That seems very reasonable. I mean, $30,000 is a heck of a lot of money, but still, doesn't that seem reasonable for?
Do we get a motion?
For things like that?
I hear, anything else from the staff?
It would really increase efficiency and make, make it much easier to track everything if we went to this, this program.
Do you have other, a lot of other places you just?
Yes, it's one of the more popular.
That's what I thought I saw. Anything else seeing none, I entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the purchase of InCode community development software package from Tyler Technologies in the amount of $30,291. In second, questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start right here.
How can, you know, when you get a whole new program, is, how hard is it going to be to shift from, from one program to the next?
This one, we, we've done a couple of demos, and it seems pretty easy to, to use. It's very user-friendly, much more user-friendly than an access database, for sure. But there, there's training included in these implementation fees, so they'll, they'll be helping staff get through it and buy, transfer everything over. We don't use Tyler products in community development right now, or city clerk. We use the access and Excel, but when we get to the finance piece, they're already using Tyler technology, so should be pretty different.
Other questions, concerns?
See, cloud element, is it our cloud, or is it based on our servers, or will be elsewhere?
It would be elsewhere. It's Tyler Technologies.
Their, right, right.
Software, yeah.
Yeah. Do we own our data? Are we able to export it if maybe, say, five, 10 years from now, we'll still own our own data?
Yeah, that's specified in the agreement, is that it's, it's our information. So it would just be a question, we wouldn't have the capabilities of manipulating it and things like that, because that's the proprietary part of it. But as far as seeing, this address has these issues, or have these issues, that would all be attributable. So we could be able to print it off or to save it as media.
And for open records purposes, that would be something that we would have to have, this archive of data.
Is the price comparable to other products that provide the same sort of services?
They're always so different, it's, it's difficult to compare them.
Does this purchase price include unlimited licenses, endless licenses, with our despair for all of our users that might need to access it?
It, it would include, all we need in the community development is about five, and they're shareable, so.
They're shareable, okay, all right. And does it include the even, does the maintenance fee include updates to the software that's used now? Or is this going to be an additional fee?
I know that currently, when Tyler rolls out updates.
Unbalanced, I know, which is with Tyler, that the updates are included. Whenever there's an update, that's part of your support, your maintenance fees.
And does it mean they have enough redundancies in their data backups and things that we don't have to worry about any concerns about their cost work?
Yeah, I don't think we've ever had to worry about Tyler's. They're, they're one of the biggest software companies out there, so we, we haven't had to worry about that. We've used them for several, 20, 30 years. It's not been cloud-based, but we've been using them.
We also use them right now through InCode, which is a...
We also, um, use them right now through InCode, which is a different ERP program is what the app is. But, um, we use it for municipal court, so that's, we purchased that, I can't remember, a couple of months ago now.
Yeah.
With the thought being that we would be able to house all of these systems in one designated. So, again, the shareability of all this, because that's one of the biggest, Amber alluded to, biggest efficiency hurdles that we have here, is that we are double and triple and quadruple, you know, entering these things. I don't even know the word for quadruple entry. Um, but it is, it is laborious. And again, the idea is that it exists in the cloud so that everybody can pull through these things and work through them together, so that, again, municipal court, police can operate, and then also, you know, Philly and finance staff can do it. So, as Amber alluded to, Tyler's, um, for better or worse, is one of the largest companies, especially in this public sector sphere. Um, there are other companies out there, but I think Philly will speak for this too, but we did have the opportunity to reach out to some other, um, old Kansas, um, communities that utilize this, this specific software, not necessarily community development. This is a newer product that they are using. But again, it's a little bit more robust, because there is a GIS component to it and a few other things.
Just answer that question.
Yeah, and that, that's a little bit more of why I think the, the maintenance cost is, is just a bit more. And that's not to say that in three years' time, they're going to come out with a new cool, um, you know, program that isn't InCode. But InCode's been around for a little bit now, so they are pretty tried and true. Uh, this is considered InCode 10, I believe. Um, so they've had, had different versions to work here, so. And again, to answer maybe your question, if we did have to do updates, I would say that it's far easier to do those incremental updates, even if there is a small cost to do those things than waiting 30 years to update software.
Yeah, I was amazed that they've been using the same thing for 30 years. Ninety.
Do we have?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry, I was just going to ask, do we have a multi-year contract that we're signing for the? Um, it, I think it's, is it in there enlisted?
I think it's one of those that are renewable annually and unless one terminates, with notice. Usually that's going to be on our side, not theirs.
Uh, new technology and has burned us so bad. I have 100% confidence in you on this, but it just stresses down. So, I just ask that all the due diligence is thorough, and sounds wonderful.
I was going to ask, that was one of the questions I was going to ask with Danny and ask is about the receipts. So, it looks like you've got that taken care of, members, subscription, you know, subscribers. They're usually called seats, so that's right. Sometimes they'll be platform-based, they'll be user-based, IP-based. Uh, the other question then is, um, this runs independently of the next item on there, right? It's not that they're required, we have to get both of them to have this.
Okay.
So, it is a completely separate page.
It wouldn't be, if we didn't get the finance piece and we got this one, um, there would still be duplicate entries, because for this newer program, there would be some loss of functionality, um, because it wouldn't tie into the older program. Um, so there would still be duplicate entry of receipts and things like that. Or if you got the finance piece and not this piece, then we would continue doing things as we are, and there would still be duplicate entry there as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, your question turned me several heads up.
Very good. No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kit?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Kicking and screaming, we dragged ourselves into the 21st century. Uh, this will enable those courts enforcement officers, our new enforcement officer, uh, more powerful tools than he's ever had. So, something we need. Onto our next item, which is the InCode financial software.
Mayor of Kansas? Um, yes, that stated, we've had fun balance. Actually, we were the first user in Kansas with a fun balance at all. And I just put 30, because that's how long I've been here, and we've had it on financial. So, I'm not sure how long we've had it. But, um, again, I, I rely a lot on, um, other people being guinea pigs. So, I called, um, some other cities that were using it, and they, um, they said the transition period is challenging, which I think is with any software change. But when it was done, it's so much easier and so much streamlined, and everything integrates. Um, one of the, one of the cities was on fun balance, um, and switched. And they're pretty recent, but she said, you know, just the bank reconciliations, the general ledger flows into that. But purchasing, um, we can have authorizations rather than pushing paper. We have electronic authorizations. Um, uh, department heads can see real-time what their budget looks like once checks have been written and receipts are posted immediately. Right now, with all the different application, with our check writing and cash receiving and purchase order, we have to post those to those different programs, and then I have to pull them in and post them before they're show up in the general ledger. So, I mean, the main part of this is the streamlining and the ability for department heads and, um, to see their financials. I really think it's going to save us a lot of time, a lot of, as Amber said, a lot of duplicate entry. The court piece, um, that are going, I think, this week, they're transitioning theirs to InCode. And right now, you know, they enter their stuff into the program, and then they bring it to us, and we enter it again into our program. So, that will integrate, and we won't have to do that duplicate, duplicate entry. So, and this, we're also requesting right now, we don't have a fixed asset program with our current software. We kind of do this with Excel spreadsheets. But this will, um, give us the ability to track all of our assets and calculate depreciation schedules and feed into our general ledger programs. Um, I think, like I said, InCode, because it's got all the pieces. I think the only piece I can think that it wouldn't integrate is our perks and rec. And I don't think they have a program for that right now.
Give it time.
But, but I think, like I said, this is, um, we probably needed to do it a long time. Um, and I think it's going to work well. From the cities I've talked to, they're very happy with, with the program, so.
Very good. All the future specifications. Uh, entertain a motion, uh, seeing no, no other input from staff, citizens. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the purchase of InCode Financial Software Package for Tyler Technologies in the amount of $85,770.
Second. He didn't say he's saying it, so.
I gave up.
Well, since that, we'll start with comments and questions.
Yes, sir. I have none. I was going to try to go with the big dollar item like I usually do.
Will they, uh, do they offer any services to help you port the data over, uh, from the old software?
Yeah, this includes the, um, the conversion. I don't know how much, I'm not sure. I mean, the data, I think we're going to have to start, um, probably end and then start new for this year. We'll still have our fun balance data, but there are some, part of this is conversion costs.
Beginning balances for everything.
Yeah, and, and we can use all of our current account numbers, so we're not going to have to reinvent the wheel. And part of this, I didn't talk about utility billing. You know, I think that's going to help. There's a lot of more capabilities for customers with, um, payments and streaming and what they can see on the website.
Yeah, I was going to ask about the data entry portion, and I didn't ask Amber that either. Is that going to be able to automatically import some of your data, or are you going to have to do a lot of hand entry?
I, I think since it's all Access databases, and they're all database-based, um, it, it should be pretty easy for them to pull. But we'll have to, it goes back for a really long time, so there's going to be a point that we're going to have to archive.
Right.
And I think they talked about pulling the last three years of data into the new program so that we'd have it, have a little bit of history to work with. So, thank you.
I was going to ask, we've got pretty significant backups of the tickets and our municipal court stuff, right? I guess that's not necessarily the reason I'm asking, that it went more, switched to InCode. They lost a significant portion of their tickets and, uh, were handing out new tickets for non-payment, because they didn't have record of.
They started using InCode, huh?
Our, yeah.
They're switching now.
Yeah, we've, uh, I can't remember exactly what they were planning to do. I believe that was our thought with municipal court, was to try to archive, um, what we had and just base it off of that, and more or less operate a few systems, um, just with some of the concerns like that, that we would have discrepancies, um, as well as just concerns about the data that we had in the first place. Again, we're kind of going from, you know, 0.0 to 10.0, a pretty quick timeframe here. So, it'll be a little bit of a jump for some of the data, like Amber alluded to. You've got Access databases that, you know, that's, that's part of the reason that the implementation costs are what they are, is because they kind of know what they're getting into as far as they're going to have to go in. They, Tyler, working alongside city staff and trying to get the correct data and going back and forth. And again, that's why this, at least on, especially on the financial side, is a nine to 12-month period. We're really not going to see the fruits of this labor until 2021, to be quite honest.
Sir? No other questions, comments for the council? Vote please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Kit?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Onto our next item, the ordinance to establish the city manager's salary. Do you have any, uh, staff? Would you like to debate that?
I see why working here.
So, I can make a, make a motion to some sort of action.
There you go.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve an ordinance to establish the city's top manager's salary with no change from current.
Second. Moving to second, questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start right here?
No comment.
Should we at least have a, explain why?
Yeah, I was just saying, right there, it's the same thing back in here. That's why I started there.
Oh, so this is where we need to ask for some additional information?
Here we go, I'll let you do it.
Perfect. We need to, um, find out the current salary, and then we also like to see the, um, salary schedule with the steps that we approved, that was the last year's budget process. If we can see that, that's additional discussion.
Yeah, that way we follow what's already placed for everybody, you know, using the same steps.
Anything else? Anything else? So, there was a motion for it to stay exactly the same. No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Kit?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Wood?
No.
Shannon?
No.
Reeves?
No.
Gurley?
No.
Mackey?
No.
Motion failed.
Motion failed?
Who would like to?
Now, uh, that motion failed, so I entertain another motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to table the topic of the ordinance to establish the city manager's salary to the next meeting.
Sir? Moving to second, questions, concerns, comments?
No, no, no.
No discussion. Vote please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Uh, yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kit?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Very good. And, and, as I said, Sean, if you're scheduled real busy, uh, just, uh, set up a time, and I'll, like a few minutes. Oh, sure. I could meet with you, and we could get a lot of this information hashed out. And there's, uh, privacy concerns, anything like that, we'd work through.
Making it retroactive.
Um, on to our next items. This, uh, leads right into our reports, and the first of which is the city manager's report.
Very happy. Couple things, just a reminder, um, elections on Tuesday, November 5th. It is an off-year election, so we just want to remind everybody of that. I think we did send out a notice today, and I believe the school was planning to do the same. But just so everybody knows, your polling places are available. If you did not get it, you should have gotten a card to your registered voter in Lineup County, from Lineup County, saying where your polling place, um, is located. You can also go to myvote.info.votekansas.org. There are three polling places in Bonner Springs, YMCA, Calvary Bible Church, um, and then, uh, the Church of Nazarene. So, again, um, that is on November 5th. And also, aside from the river report, I just want to take a quick moment and be a vantage for everybody. But, um, Amber has been working on a program, military treaty banners. I'm sure some of us have seen these before, but just kind of want to show you something that we're, we're looking at currently, but, um, just kind of gives a, a better perspective. We have this markup done to show it to you folks. Um, I just want to bring attention to it. We're hoping to, to get a program started, to actually get this, um, put up next year around, um, 4th of July, that timeframe. But, um, any questions or concerns or thoughts on this program as we're reviewing it? Um, Amber has already reached out to the DFW, again, just trying to solicit some feedback as we look to do this. Again, you've probably been to a few cities that have a similar type of program. But again, just a, I think, a good way, um, to memorialize veterans, as well as active-duty military personnel. The city would partner with this group to actually go put these banners together in this type of format. Uh, again, just showcasing local, local folks, so.
Will people be able to sponsor a banner or sort of memorialize someone?
The thought is that we would have, um, there is a cost, obviously, to produce that, so the thought would be to put an application together and allow people to apply, if you will. Um, and kind of, that's one of the questions that we'd obviously like to get feedback from the communities. How do we prioritize that? There's obviously a limited number of spots that we can put this in. Think, how many do we have in total?
50 spots, 20 on Oak and 10 on Young House.
So, so again, the timeframe, as long, as far as how long these would stay up. Some places are, you know, annually they do this, or it's a couple of years they return the banner to the family. Um, things like that. So, again, if anybody has any thoughts on this, um, please, you know, get in touch with Amber about this, as well as the community. I think it's, it's a great thing that Amber's taken the initiative to, to look into this and try to do something together. Um, other than my written report, that's all I have.
Uh, moving right along into city council items, and since we've kind of gone with that, uh, instead of always starting at the other ends, we'll start at these ends.
Oh.
City council items.
Um, I was very pleased that, for some purpose, we got, um, something in the Bonner Springs High School yearbook for 2020 from the city council, because I feel that the connection of the schools and the community is so important, just like our mock, uh, city council meeting. It starts kids getting involved. Yeah.
I'd like to add a few comments to Sean's about that program. Uh, and Amber, uh, Lenworth did that, and my wife applied for one of those for her father. And she was real proud to do that, and it was, it was exciting, and it was a good thing. And his picture was up there, and I'd be need to have it in Bonner, he's from Bonner. And so, it is a neat thing. We came through, I think it was in the O'Shea, that, this weekend, that, uh, they were all along, and we noticed it, it's very impressive, and it, uh, that is a good program. So, that's a good program. Any, what is the latest on 436? a good program. Any, what is the latest on 4/36, Sean?
We will be permitting around November, or I'm the principal of the company, so we are taking bids for the plumbing as well as the mold restoration and redoing the internal part of the house that's been flooded. So I have already talked to Amber about getting those permits issued the first week of November, available to the election stuff. And we just finished one property, the two and I all cut behind the library. We just actually closed on that. And I was excited because he's an esports kind of person and was excited to move to Bonner. He's a person in my age group. And we just closed on that, so our next one is forthcoming.
Okay. Are there any code, outstanding code violations or anything from the city's standpoint?
There's been some loan fines, different things assessed, but all the things have been assessed and we paid along with the fines.
So they're caught up?
They're not caught up. Yeah, they have been assessed, and we've been billed for them. And I presume like, we can pay them as part of the permitting, part of your property tax bill at this point.
The one, if they've been assessed, they're part of property, property taxes, unless they haven't been.
So make a search.
If, if they've been assessed as part of, part of property taxes, they would go towards the property tax bill. If they haven't gone as an assessment yet and it's only been invoiced, then it would be part of the permitting process.
Okay, part of the spot hearing, I apologize. But, so, the reason they go that far is because they're delinquent.
If, if they're invoiced.
If they've gone to property tax, then they've been delinquent. Is that correct or am I?
That, that would typically mean that there hasn't been a building permit yet issued for it, in which case then that would have been paid back, I think is what, yeah.
Or, or if we've issued an invoice and a second invoice, and those are unpaid, then they would go to assessments.
I can't very guess. I have been watching the Devon Ball thing, as everybody already
knows. And I was talking to Sean, whenever the, this year, the documents actually disappeared. And we were lucky enough that they were updating their system with the new information. Devon Ball filed a case and split the property in three different plots, instead of the seven or eight properties that they had. And it did delete a bunch of the information that we had, or like the sales data and things like that. But Sean was able to help me figure out that that's been archived, it's just not online anymore. And what this is showing is a approximately $3 million increase for the base property, so the quarry property that we're watching, the 490 acres. If you go to GIS now and look at it, it's one single parcel, but it's went all the way through the appraisal process. And the CAPPY was able to fight it with, with it being issued by, or a protest from a person of that jurisdiction. They were able to counter protests, their protests, and I believe their settlement was that the 490 is all now commercial area, so it puts it into a different tax bracket for us, a different designation. That's why there's such a significant increase on the appraised total and the assessed value. You'll see, there's 2019 data for the appraised total, it's assessed data, but there's 2018 taxes. And I did a rough calculation, that'll add about 100, 110,000 to the county's budget, and about 30 of that will be coming directly back to Bonner because of this. They have another 200 acres above this plot that they acquired from heartland, from basically the Boy Scouts, and as well as some other plots that they have combined. And that has all been rezoned to agricultural, so that will be applied to another day, but they're not currently quarrying that. And there's a creek that splits the two of them. So it, basically it opens it up so that we have a little more control over it, because now all commercial property, everything that they're quarrying, and we're finally getting our money back. That was my piece on that. It was my mountain I was standing on last year, and I'm glad to see that it actually worked. There's also several other pieces to this. When I was submitting the reports, that they've started a, thanks to Mayor Alvey and some of his, I mean, tons of different staff, people in all kinds of different departments, they've started a trickle plan for our worst tax property offenses, meaning like 10 to 15 years or so. And they have started, instead of dumping the 32-some properties that were public, and then there's an additional probably 10 to 15 that were semi-pidly held in the land bank, they've started releasing them in like five to seven property lots that were not inundated and flooded with a bunch of foreclosed tax properties. So I was mentioning all of that because they're at least, why that county is aware that we're looking at, and they're giving us a little bit better nod. And Devon Ball is finally paying what we're worth with that. I, oh, and ode to our theater, or our, what is it? Our new performing arts theater thing, went ahead and brought a guy, Fox Mask. So, remember, remember, 5th of November?
Yes.
Like that?
Yes.
Okay. Any theater nerds, I'll go ahead and pass. Everybody, have a good night.
Sir?
Just sitting here, listening to all the things that have gone on with our staff. We, I, I think I can speak for all of us. Thank you. You guys and gals have just, it's amazing to sit here and see everything that's going on and see how we're meeting the needs of the community and, and everything that's going on in your lives. And sometimes we don't feel, sometimes I feel you all don't get enough recognition, but I'm really proud of all of you.
On East Morse, between 32 and McGrandwood, on that little turnaround driveway, someone just thoughtfully left a big pile of trash. It's been sitting there for about a week. And then I also saw today on Channel Five, or Channel Nine covered it, is when I saw, where our own Melba Mills was honored at the Chiefs game as part of the Chiefs 100. It's kind of neat to see little Bonner Springs represented.
And the Chiefs team did a documentary.
Yes, they did. Thank you.
And I brought this tonight to show.
That's right. I'm gonna just take that thunder right away, everybody.
Love you, Mary. Thank you.
No, that's fine. I'm, I'm happy to do it. I, I thought it was such a nice tribute that they did to commemorate her. I, I'd close with that. First, I wanted to make sure everyone was aware that the Wyandotte County Mayor's Per Breakfast will be Friday morning, November 8th, at the Rivet, Riverton Civic Center. If you need ticket information, you can contact Chris or Amber. About that, I'll, I'll be happy to be there and share a prayer. Also, the last weekend for the farmer's market was last weekend. It was, seemed to have a big turnout of both vendors and consumers. I really appreciate all the hard work that's gone into the farmer's market this year. They had this nightmare on Elm, night, day on, I'm here, day mirror, day mirror on Elm Street activities. And that was very well received also, the, the bounce house, as well as all the city toucher truck. And that kind of community involvement is very important. That's part of the, the flavor of Bonner Springs and the, the impression that people get. I get a lot of compliments on the farmer's market and that we have one. A lot of people don't know that we have one, so we, we need still to consider increasing our advertisement of that with signage. I, I think next year I'm going to make some suggestions on that. But temporary and longer term sign, signs that we can have around that would direct people to that. The, it is a labor of love for those involved in it. Fortunately, those that volunteered a good number of their time will win a great deal, as, as I really appreciate all that, that you do, Mrs. Woods. Moving on. Yes. Last week, as I made most, made mention earlier, there was some question or uncertainty as to some of my appointments that I made. Specifically, there seemed to be a concern about an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals. It was questioned that it was unfit and that my judgment could have been tainted, and there was no due process specifically. I do want to explain and let everyone know that the selection I made was recommended to me by the Board of Zoning Appeals, Board, I'm sorry, Planning and Zoning. The individual had filled out a volunteer resume, and from that, I used that information on those that have applied to try and pick the absolute best individual for the position. The one that I selected was Larry Clark, and you confirmed here. So this process is known by the Planning and Zoning. It's made mention of in the city council, and you all have availability to those records. The, the volunteers' application does have some personal contact information on it, so it's not customarily made a part of public record, or I'm sorry, the public, publicly disseminated information, but it is available through the city clerk to any of you council people who have any questions. Mr. Clark had previously been the Finance Commissioner for the city of Girard, Kansas. He's a graduate of Pittsburgh University. He was also a city commissioner in Girard and the zoning administrator for Crawford County. He's been involved in government for, from one form or another, for his entire career, and has worked more recently or locally in the appraisals, doing appraisals, and is quite familiar with zoning regulations. He's now been appointed as a, on the Board of the National Appraisers.
Society.
Society. I didn't know if it was administration or society.
IAS.
And so I felt his qualifications greatly qualified him for that, since he had volunteered. Not to take away from any of the other applicants, it was my selection, and I felt it was very appropriate. Due process was questioned. Due process is the fair and open opportunity, generally requiring fairness in government proceedings, entitling a person to notice an opportunity to be heard at a hearing. Those, those opportunities are part of what this process does, both in them making it known, the planning and zoning making it known, or any group making it known that these people have volunteered, and then us, our me, evaluating those different people that have an interest, and then making the suggestion to you all and you all confirming that. So I don't understand the concerns about due process. So if anyone has any concerns with any of the selections for any of the committees that I have, I, as always, this is given prior to the meeting, it's made available to everyone. And if you have any concerns, please let me know. Otherwise, I stand for any questions?
May I ask what a task force does and how it's different from a commission?
I think you're referring to the Development Review Committee. And I remember when we discussed that, I didn't say that it was disbanded, no, I'm sorry, disbanded. I just said that it hadn't met for a significant length of time. And it hadn't, and it rarely does. The difference between that and what?
Between an economic task force, or the, the economic task force and a commission, what is the difference in how they operate or the, I think it's the standards, or like it's the Robert's Rule side of how they differ?
So the Development Review Committee is a subcommittee of the council that reviews or suggests.
Part of, it was specifically the Economic Development Task Force is what I had an issue with, and my questions about.
Yeah. I, I believe that committee you're referring to is actually the Development Review Committee, not, I'm not. Is there a, a separate Economic Development Committee?
There's, there's the Economic Development Task Force, and then the Development Review Team is typically staff-based. It's finance and admin. I, I think the Economic Development Task Force is probably that.
Not always your review committee. But the main purpose of that Economic Development Review Task Force, I'm sorry, is to give guidance to the city staff on to the general concerns that perhaps could come up along the development process. It's not a decision-making body. It's information gathering. It's not a place to where things are approved or not approved. It's a.
It's still an appointment though, correct?
Oh, yes. And I, with all our committees, with all the different committee liaisons from the city council, being involved with Parks and Rec, or the Monter Beautiful, or the Development Review Committee, or the Economic Development Committee, I try and place the best councilperson for that committee on that committee.
Okay. With the Economic Development Task Force, my biggest thing was I took issue with the fact that there's no one, or so I need to respectfully, education-wise, there's no one with real estate development or construction experience on that particular group.
That's your perception?
No, that's factual, based off of LinkedIn or data that you can find easily available.
The experience of the people on that committee, I think, is the most valuable to that committee. I don't think having a realtor's license necessarily makes you an expert on, on that. So that's why I don't have.
You don't believe that the fact that being part of a development agreement doesn't make you more experienced than somebody who doesn't have any development experience?
No. The people on there do have development experience, just not your development experience.
Okay.
They've been a part of the, they've been a part of the Economic Development Review Committee. That's one of the things, they have experience.
Okay. Could they statistically show me their relevance in real estate and how, what their experience is? Could they show me how many properties they've sold? Could they show me how many properties they've ever?
Because it, it's not a requirement to be a part of the Economic Development Review Committee to have sold properties. It's not a part of the Economic Development Committee Task Force to keep properties in Bonner Springs of a certain level or a certain, with or without co-variances, code violations. I don't have, I don't have that information. That's not a part of my selection process. So I try and select council people to represent and be a part of the different committees that are best suited for those committees. And I think I have.
I appreciate your opinion, but that's just your opinion. I also have an opinion that I don't believe that it makes sense to set a city standard, that we put people on commissions based off of age, friendship, or which church they go to. And I think we should do it off of facts and data rather than personal opinion.
I absolutely agree.
I, I also take issue with the fact that your wife works for the Economic Development Commission, or the company or team, I'm misspeaking on it, but she works directly for Wyandotte County. And I personally believe that that's a conflict.
County and I personally believe that that's a conflict of interest, that she's working against our interests when you guys are within the same household. And I don't respect the fact or I don't agree with the fact that there's no oversight outside of people that you personally selected and there's no one to question anything. We have a $500 million project coming in and there's three people, now four, that don't have any education background connections or knowledge of development, real estate, real estate numbers or anything along with tax valuations, state codes, policymaking, anything along those lines, I mean, literally not a single thing. All of the individuals involved are all educated and they all have experience, but none of it has to do with a $500 million project. Our city is $548 million right now, we're literally getting ready to develop it and double the size of it and my biggest issue, the, I greatly respect you bringing this up and I appreciate it, um, because the sole premise of why I ran for mayorship was because I've been excluded from every single possible thing. I just feel like I've been.
And I, I appreciate.
I've got one more thing, I, I apologize for trying to cut you off. Whenever I was walking into City Hall for the past year, uh, it, it, at first it was ironic when it was once and I walked into City Hall and Tom would show up, but it started becoming a game. I could walk into City Hall and if I brought my escape and didn't bring my son and walk up from my house, which I live downtown, Tom Stevens would show up to City Hall within 35 to 40 minutes. I pointed it out to almost every single staff member and at first it didn't believe me and then once it started happening, eight different documented times, it was ridiculous. All I'm trying to do is just be a part of the city and I feel like you've excluded me because in 2015, the city lost that project because of my research, my reports that I submitted as an individual and a person.
Why do you think you've been excluded?
Because I've never once even, I tried to ask about uh, commissions and all of that stuff. I was, two years ago, I was brand new to this. I had no one to turn to or to ask for it, so I tried to ask my peers whom, everybody's older than me, but I haven't had any opportunities, I don't feel I've had any fair opportunities because of, of my family members and I feel as though I've been discriminated on that side of it because of my own dealings and things that I've done.
Well, personally, Jordan, I, no, wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Personally, Jordan?
Yes.
I, I really want you to know, I try and not, um, I concern myself with other people's families or where they go to church or they, if they do or don't or did or, or don't happen to. What I try and do is do my very best to determine the best councilperson for the different committees.
I respect that.
And that's what I meant. Unfortunately, the time that you've put in and the, the experiences that you have, I don't feel they are a correct fit, evidently, because I haven't placed you on a committee.
I agree with that.
I don't feel you'd be a good fit with the seniors committee, the, um, Development Economic Review Committee, um, that's my personal determination and that's what I. It, it has nothing to do with your family, it has nothing to do with your, it, it's not a, a personal concern. I, I'm not, I'm not holding any of your personal concerns that you seem to be voicing against.
Well, can I appreciate and respect bringing you up, like Mr. Chan or something?
And I would like to address one thing. You can take shots at me all you want, I don't care, but I do take issue with you taking shots at the staff.
I never take any of the staff, somebody just bring that up, my respect.
Let me finish talking. You had your chance, I let you talk.
Okay.
Let me talk. The staff has never, they've always been in a professional manner, have acted in a professional manner, not once have they ever called and said, Jordan, down here. When I was here last week, I think it was, you popped in, should I have immediately questioned, did the staff contact you, let you know that I was here? I don't appreciate you contacting, saying, taking shots at the staff. You won't take shots at me, that's fine, but the staff has always acted in a very professional manner and I think you owe them an apology.
I respect all my staff members, that's why I did it, because you're bullying and asshole dude. You've been.
Now, now I'm.
At this point in time, I'd like to ask for a motion for censure if he's gonna use that type of attitude and call all his names and use that type of attitude.
So moved. Senator, there's been a mo, a motion and a second for censure. A censure, um, of Jordan Mackey, Councilman, concerning his language and that's it, that's it, thank you.
Well, basically, I think he has shown complete disrespect to the members of this council. We, we don't always agree on everything. You and I've disagreed on things, but we've always acted in a very dignified manner and have never taken shots at you either one, either one, so never done that. I think he needs to learn that, yes, you can disagree.
Of course, you're bullying, that's what you do, you bully everybody. You don't have to speak, everybody.
You don't have your chance to speak, but what I'm saying is that he has always taken opportunities to try to, if you don't agree with him, take those shots at people and he tries to undercut you, use the little names, tries to make insinuations about the staff is doing things that they shouldn't be, all of a sudden we're holding secret meetings and I think it's time that he learns that it is not appropriate behavior.
Other questions or other comments?
No.
Sir?
Hey, talk.
I, I do, it came to me, I agree with this, I've been quiet for quite a while and I've been on, I've been in on this since the day one when Renee. Stanley made her first complaint and you and I stood out there before you came on the council, so I've been quiet about this and uh, you know, to sit here and listen to this, to listen about Deffenball, to this, you know, I'm still not sure if there was violations of code violations, I think there was, I think that's why I was here. You know, I, I agree with this. You and I have talked in the military, we go to the lowest possible level when we discuss it and uh, you and I have done that, I've given you that opportunity and I've given you every opportunity that you just said, no one has said anything, I said I'll help you any way I can and you stepped on it with me. And you've got these houses, you're talking about Deffenball or you talk the way you do to the council members. I tried to tell you the last time we talked privately, integrity, when a person loses their integrity, they've lost it all. I agree with what's taking place here and I'm not gonna be quiet much longer, I already gave you a warning on that.
I know I've been threatened, I understand that, you've done it several times, you dropped the thing right in front of me and said, if you don't fix this problem, then I'm gonna do it for you. I didn't have the money to fix the problem, dude, I've been trying.
My name is Mike and that's the thing that was censuring right here, is you have no respect for people and you know, I.
I won't be bullying, I won't be bullying, I learned, my family taught me, I won't scan, be bullying.
Mr. Eric, can you please tell me more about the process of censure and the consequences and outcome?
Censure, I defer to city staff, do you have a definition of what censure is?
An expression of strong disapproval or harsh criticism. In parlayed procedure, is a debatable main motion that could be adopted by a majority vote, similar to a motion of no confidence.
So it's a, a public vote of censure, which means that he is being called into public that he's, for his use of language and is being disrespectful?
Is there, are there any specific consequences or even the consequences that it's a public statement?
Would you like an opportunity to respond?
Yes, sir, I appreciate your, that a concern and everybody addressing the things that interest.
Anything else, saying none? Vote please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
I don't feel it makes sense to abstain.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kidd?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Your motion has been supported?
It's passed, we're adjourned.
Uh, we can play it down. Uh, if you'd like to go on Facebook and watch that, uh, video of Melba Mills, it's very moving.
Yeah, I enjoyed it.
Sir, we were talking last year on our Facebook and she just pulled all your comments. Yeah, I was gonna show the video, I had to send it to bring that.